Recording started.
Thank you, Peter. This is Ray Weldy and this Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors, the Budget Workshop Work Session for Thursday, November 12th, 2020 is about to get underway. Thank you for joining us and I'll turn the Budget Workshop over to Township Manager Joe Gouda.
Thank you, Board Chair. I would like to say that I had the pleasure of working on or in nine budget cycles for the township. With that to say that this has been one of the most challenging to date. With that stated, our fiscal prudence over the years has seen our fund balance grow from around 2.4 million when I first walked in to about 4.2 million currently. We are prepared to play prevent defense throughout next year, but we can only do that with things that we can't control. If the governor's office or the county decide businesses are to go dark or shut down, that will add additional fiscal wrinkles to basically our issues. The budget presented tonight is sort of a chess match that involves a myriad of other budgets and contingencies. It's only with fiscal prudence can we see the light at the end of this COVID tunnel. It will require all department heads to toe the line and that may mean restructuring departments and/or the way we conduct business or basically just conduct business. All departments need to understand that this is basically a COVID-related budget. I will proceed to go with the operating fund now and just highlight some attributes as we page through it. Peter, if you could put the O1. The first slide. As you've basically seen, even though the slides aren't up right now, basically we carried over 4.2 million into the 2020 fiscal year. We're projecting right now, basically an estimated fund balance going into 2021 at a little bit over $3 million. So we will be using some fund balance in this given year. With that being said, the main impact that we would have on the revenue line items is of course your real estate transfer, your earned income tax, the mercantile taxes, as well as your local service tax. We've been pretty fortunate with the EIT that that's been a pretty robust tax for us over the years. Currently, I would say that, you know, since we shut down in 2020, I would expect that for the 2021 fiscal year that we would possibly lose anywhere from 20 to 30% of that earned income tax revenue that we would typically get in a given year. As far as fines and forfeitures, hopefully the courts are allowed to remain open so revenue could come in there. As far as state shared revenues, the state pension grant, right now we received 482,000 this year. I would conservatively expect that to decline due to the state or the Commonwealth's own revenue issues to about 445,000 for next year. As far as. As far as building permits, I would say the zoning office has been doing a stellar job and will continue to do so even in next year. For next year's budget, we have them at 425,000 and change. We do have a new line item courtesy of Mike Italia and his fee schedule for zoning permit and we have a placeholder of 15,000 there for this respective year. As far as franchise fees, we would be projecting around 445,000. That has little by little over the years has been dropping and that's because people are now using other modes of cable, not just Comcast, not just Verizon. There's other ways to watch TV in today's world. As far as inter-fund charges or revenue that would be coming in, I built in a cushion from our operating reserve for a million dollars as well as from the capital reserve fund of $300,000. We have not used that in past years. My intention is not to use it, but I need to include that in there for flexibility purposes. That may occur, but we're going to have to control certain items. I just want the board to be aware of that. So as far as our revenues projected for 2021, we should be around 10.5 if everything comes to fruition. This year, we would be ending the year around 9.9 million dollars. That is why that we would have these inter-fund transfers coming over to assist us in 2021. As far as expenditures, what we have listed, basically under general government, we have a full boat of probably appropriations that are there. That may need some further restructuring in offices just in case as we see the year proceeds, you know, goes next year. As far as the engineering element, right now we're projecting to be around, probably around 123,000, $124,000 next year for engineering services. I'm projecting around 115,000 and we're going to watch that closely. As far as the police, the police of course represent anywhere from 60 to 70% of our total operating budget. We're projecting this ending this year around 6.6, 6.7. Next year, we have a budget of 7.6, but that's with full appropriations if needed. And just in case, thank the flexibility to the chief also. God forbid if we have any emergent issues. As far as the fire marshal's office, again, we talked about office restructure there. We've built in some contingencies. They're doing a very good job with their limited staff. Right now they're budgeted for 463,276 dollars for the 2021 budget. I don't see us using all those appropriations, but just in case if something does pop up, more COVID-related or emergent in nature. As far as protective inspections, which is the zoning area, we're doing well again in this given year. Mike is doing a good job for us there. We're projecting probably an estimation around $443,000 of expenditures in 2020. As far as 2021, we have about 490,000 listed there. And that includes Mike being as an outside consultant at his firm there also. As far as public works, we're projecting right now will be around $910,000 for 2020. For the 2021 year, we got a little bit over a million dollars listed. So we're trying to keep appropriations available, just in case for contingency, emergency areas if needed and gives us flexibility. One of the other items, it's a small item, under cultural or recreation, typically we have the summer pass program there. The summer pass program did not occur. We still, it didn't occur during the summer, so we still have a $5,000 credit with them. So that would cover us. They were already paid. And so the summer pass program, if it's looking to occur this given year, it'd still occur. So what we do is have some other substitutions, 2,500 go into Veterans Advisory Committee and also 2,500 for the LSAA, which is for both entities, both basically COVID-related, trying to assist them with their endeavors that they do for their events in the township. So that's kind of a new wrinkle there for the 2,500 for the Veterans Advisory Committee and 2,500 for LSAA. And basically, if you go to inter-fund operating transfers, Pete, right now as far as the library fund, right now we gave them $640,000 with next year being a COVID-related issue, revenue being extremely tight. They're budgeted at that $500,000 allocation that we discussed in the prior week. As far as their capital reserve, again, it's the $10,000 that we referenced in the prior week. The transfer to the rescue fund, that's 240,000 and that's to make up for, you know, the prior year difference that they were asking as well as the current year allocation. So that would need to occur. So you'll see a little bit of, as far as the 2020 ending, we would have expended 1.3 million. As far as next year, it's about 750,000 and that's due to the fact that we are going to be running in a deficit mode. So to kind of balance ourselves, we had a reset for 2021. Our expenditures are about 11.9 and that may be a high projection, but we're looking at possibly a $1.4 million shortfall. Again, my job, our job as department heads is to basically wheel back any expenditures and try to contain expenditures as best as we can and try to initiate revenue, basically anything that's going in fruit. One of the things that we did do this year is on the mercantile with the businesses, we did have an audit firm go out there and for next year, you'll see like an additional $50,000 be recouped in next year's budget because of those initiatives. So we're going to try to tweak revenue as best as we can and contain expenditures as best as we can. That's all I have on the general fund operations for tonight. Any questions on that?
Just, just one, Joe, on the earned income tax that you have, the projections on page one.
Okay.
Okay, you have down that this year we were projected 5.1 million.
Yes.
Okay, right now we're at 2.9. By the end of the year, we're estimated to be at 4.8. So we're projected to take in 2.1 million for remainder of the year over the next seven weeks?
Yeah, well, you got a couple, you got some quarters coming in and what is allowable is they call it the 13th, the 13th month. What is basically your receivables that are related to this year. So that it allows you to go have a look back feature. So this revenue you may get in 2021, but in reality due for 2020. So there is that 13 month that's, that's the practice and the auditors will concur with it. So right now, we typically put about 1.5 million on a given year as far as a receivable. And we usually collect that in January, maybe a little bit in February. What I'm trying to do is collect as little as I can in, let's say it this way. I'm trying to smooth it out as best as I can. That's a better term. So as far as that receivable, I'm kind of playing with the receivable and trying to smooth out next year as best as I can because that's going to be the more problematic year. So that's, with the numbers you have or projections, they should be pretty true to form, but you know, there could be some slight deviations and I'll be monitoring that all throughout the year.
So next year looks pretty bleak too at 4.2 million, which is even less than this year or so. Anything over and above that would be a bonus.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other questions on the O1? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the next one. Peter?
Sorry to interrupt. If you're not speaking, please meet your microphones. You'll be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, and so the next one up is the operating reserve fund, which is the 95 fund. What you'll basically see us for 2020 and in the year about 1.7 million. As far as going into the 2021 budget, again, you'll see that transfer or potential transfer to the general fund of a million dollars. Typically, I would have a reserve there of 275 on a giving year. I've never used it since I've been here. Next year, you got a million dollars sitting there and again, that's more for defensible purposes. Not sure if we're going to use it, but it may come into play. It may not be that total amount, but I'd rather have that luxury and flexibility for the township. And if we do use it, it would be a million dollars, leaving a remaining reserve of $778,000. Any questions on the operating reserve fund? Hearing none. We'll move to the next one. Peter? I believe the next one is the capital reserve fund. While Peter catches up with all, since I provided this already to the board, on the capital reserve side, we're basically projecting to have a fund balance of about 1.1 million sitting there, which would carry over into the 2021 budget. With that being said, even if we did not receive any RDA funds next year, I painted the bleakest picture there as well as no transfer from the general fund that would be going to the typical capital reserve fund that we typically fund in a given year. What you have there are placeholders for capital purchase and administration, technology, computer AV-related items, microphones there, capital construction, 50,000 allocation. That's more the administration building, the facade roof, anything with HVAC waterproofing to protect the police area downstairs as well as district court. The next part is capital purchases for the police. That gives them basically two vehicles with their outfits. And that's only in case if RDA doesn't come through. Anything slightly with the dog-related housing. The same thing for the radio system and the county DNA program, which is the township's share. As far as capital purchases, the fire marshal, again, you got the radio system there. He also has gear related at 107 as well as just in case for an additional vehicle. Doesn't necessarily have to be a vehicle that for the RDA could be just another pickup truck for them if it's deemed needed. So that's also just a placeholder. Fire rescue services, again, it's the fire gear that was promised to them. I believe the total is about 101,000 or so, but we get 102,000. You also have the radio component for Feastable Lower South and as well as Tri-Hampton. So you have 114,800 dollars as a placeholder. Next one is public works. Basically, that's if they don't get an allocation from the RDA. That's basically for another pickup and any other small ancillary stuff that would be needed for public works. As far as construction and rebuilding, that's basically your paving program if needed. I got a placeholder of 350,000 just in case we don't get anything from RDA. As far as capital improvements, 25,000 for recreation, 25,000 for Play Wiki. You got a placeholder of 50,000 sitting there. And again, if needed, the transfer of 300,000 going back to the general fund just in case we need it. Again, giving us the flexibility and the luxury to operate between funds and to help out the O1 fund if needed. Any other questions on the capital reserve? Not hearing any. I would move on to I guess sewer capital. The sewer capital was all previously discussed. There are no changes from previously. We're projecting to end the year about 1.3 million on the sewer capital reserve. Basically, we have enough there for pumping station work and any type of construction. I believe Mark has some two items in the hopper, I believe with pumping station B and C. So there would be some expenditures or activity there and we would have a remaining balance of about 1.158 in the 2021 year. Any questions on sewer capital reserve? Hearing none. We'll move to the last one, which is the library capital reserve. The library capital reserve has already been gone over, but we're projecting to have around $57,000 there as we end the year. They would get their allocation that they typically get of 10,000 for the next year. We built in some appropriations of 20,000 just in case they have any more emergency needs. But they would end the year, if they use the $20,000, they would have a remaining projected reserve of $47,500 sitting there in case for any type of items that would arise. Any questions on library capital reserve? Hearing none. That would be the end of the presentation on the five funds that are typically presented at this time. Thank you, Pete. Okay, so we have about 10 minutes. In that 10 minutes, there's a couple items I wanted to go over with you briefly. As far as in the manager's report, you will have, we got some quotes from Tri-State Engineering with John Genovese. We haven't had maps done in probably from 2012, 2013. So being proposed tonight would be street maps, zoning maps, sanitary sewer maps, storm sewer mapping. So there's a projection cost of about a little over $7,000 that will be asked to be approved for tonight and that'll be in the manager's report. Additionally, there is in the manager's report, there is, basically we're looking for approval for the public works director to sign off on a projected agreement with Lower Moreland Township. And Lower Moreland basically is looking to install sanitary sewage flow meter at one of our existing manholes in County Line Road. Basically, Lower Moreland would pay for the cost, the installation, and also they would allow us or give us notification, 24-hour notification if they are to touch any of those at that particular manhole so public works is aware and to make sure that the lid is properly put back on as well as they would be sharing all their data with the township as far as the flow. This was run by Joe from CKS, Joe Nolan. Joe didn't have any issues. So we would be looking for Mark to sign off on this. I cannot sign off on it since I'm also a member of the authority over there. That's why Mark would be signing that one. And lastly, Pat Armstrong will be coming before you with regard to the BCIU. And he'll be discussing or having some conversations with regard to their two attorneys, Mr. Tarenti and Mr. Khan that represents the BCIU. And it's dealing with their development agreement, stormwater, O and M agreement, as well as their letter of credit. So Mr. Armstrong will be coming by probably around 7:30-ish if we could take your in kind of first if possible because he has an eight o'clock appointment.
I'm actually on now. I popped in about five minutes ago.
Okay. Did you want to go over that real quick, Pat?
It's up to you whenever you want me to go. So, so thanks again for having me, guys. So since your last meeting that I participated in, the solicitor for the IU, the Bucks County IU, reached out and said, listen, it's taking them a while, a while meaning, meaning a handful of weeks to secure that letter of credit for the financial security associated with their project. And the school district and the IU really want to get, they're chomping on the bit to start that work because I think everyone, at least everyone that I've talked to is on the same page that it's specific to the traffic congestion at that property. It makes sense to get it going sooner rather than later. So what they've requested is, they first requested a waiver altogether of the financial security. But then I talked to him and I said, listen, I don't know if that's going to fly. I mean, granted, it is the school district, so I don't have that much of a concern, but I'm not sure how the board feels. But I think where we ended up is now they're asking more so for the ability to start the work once the final plan is signed and recorded, once the development in the stormwater O and M agreements are signed and recorded, but be able to start that work once those documents and the plan is all signed and recorded, but before we actually have the letter of credit in hand. And if you were to entertain that, not necessarily a waiver, but almost a deferment of the requirement for the financial securities and allow them to start the construction before we have that, I would just recommend that the permits that are issued, I just have them conditional upon the Bucks County IU providing us with the letter of credit within a certain period of time, whether it be two weeks or three weeks, whatever you feel is appropriate. But again, it is a school district. I don't think we have that worry about with respect to them not completing the improvements in a manner satisfactory to the township. But it still would be a good idea to make sure they follow through with the letter of credit when they can get it. I think the real issue on their end was they weren't able to, they're not able to get it as quickly as they would have thought. But that, that in nutshell is, is why I'm back, back before you. That's all.
Pat, just one question. Are you confident or do you think it's prudent for us to, let's say we say three weeks, okay, for the letter of credit tonight, then is that, what if they can't get it together in three weeks? I don't know. It just sounds like maybe there's, they're concerned about this letter of credit because first there was a request for a waiver and now that there's a request for an extension. And I understand they're probably good for it and it's probably not an issue. It just, you know, we don't want to be caught between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, it is the school district. So I'm not, if it was your normal developer, I'd be less inclined to recommend it, but I, it's a school district. I don't have, I mean, I don't have any direct dealings with, you know, the Neshamity School District or the Bucks County IU with respect to this type of a situation. But I would be surprised if, number one, I'd be surprised if they couldn't get a letter of credit. And I would also be surprised if they let the, you know, left the township in a lurch and earn a bad position. So I don't have that much of a concern. And, and if we give them the three weeks and three weeks come and go and they still don't have it, then we could, we can say, all right, well, then you guys stop, stop the work until you get us that letter of credit. And we just got to make sure that the permits that are issued has that condition in there. That's all. And we do, I mean, we'll have a development agreement. We'll have the plans. Everything's going to be, everything will be in place except for that letter of credit.
Thank you.
And I guess what I could do is to kind of boots and suspenders, I could add a very short provision in the development agreement to somehow tie this in too, if, if the board's going to entertain their request. But that's all I have. I don't know if, Joe, are you going to have them act on that now or at the seven, I guess 7:30? Is that the other meeting?
At the 7:30 meeting, yes, because this is still a work session right now.
Yeah, we can do that first, Pat, and get you out. So.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Frank. And I believe Matt also had an issue with, I guess, dealing with that resolution that was the Grant Chito resolution. I believe kind of the way it was written, it had the appearance that it looked like the township was committing $6,000 to it. In reality, it's only $3,000 that would be committed and $3,000 would be the grant. So Frank would talk about perfecting it.
Yeah, so Matt called me earlier this evening. We talked about it. He's, he's going to suggest the motion to correct the amounts in the resolution to the correct amounts as opposed to what was included. So it'll be just, it'll be an easy cleanup matter.
Thank you, Frank. I think that's all that I have at this given point in time. And it's 7:28.
Sounds good. If there's nothing else, we have a minute or so and we're just going to slide right into the public meeting in the session we're in now, right? There's no need to switch over again?
No, sir.
Correct. And Ron Schwartz is on and he's going to talk this evening, or Joe's going to talk this evening about the, the traffic improvement. And I was instructed by Joe to reach out to Ron about sharing in the cost to do the specs. Ron got immediately back to us and indicated that he is willing to do so. And so the motion, I think Ron will confirm that. The motion's going to be to authorize the preparation of the specs by Joe for it costs not to exceed $20,000.
And that cost to be split 50/50 by Colonial Nissan in Lower Southampton Township?
Correct.
So those costs, it's around here is for Joe to do his preparation or that's how much the project could go over the, our grant that we have?
No, Ron, we need to get specs and get a bid on to know the exact cost. You know, we've had lots of discussions and estimates, but we need, we need a, a bid process to get the exact cost so we know we, you, the township know what we're talking about. It's speculated by Joe Fiacco that there was 25,000 billed in for contingency and 15,000 for design. So he's hoping it can come in at or near the 150,000, but unless we have a bid process, we'll never know and we'll just continue talking about it.
I understand. Okay, we really, we have no choice. If we want to move forward, we need the specs to get the estimate to move forward. So I understand.
Okay.
Good. So we're, we're ready to start the public meeting?
Yep.
And Joe, you're ready to go?
Yes, sir.
About, is the rest of the board ready?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome to the public meeting of the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors for Thursday, November 12th, 2020. Welcome to the public meeting of the Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors for Thursday, November 12, 2020. This is Ray Weldy. The meeting is being held via teleconference virtually and has been duly advertised as such. To begin the meeting, will the board, will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before tonight's public meeting, the board held an executive session at 6:30 PM to discuss the personnel issue. The executive session lasted until approximately 6:55. At 6:55 PM, the board then switched to a work session, and the work session consisted mainly of a budget workshop for 2021. In the budget workshop, the board discussed the general fund, the general operating fund, the operating reserve budget, the sewer capital reserve budget, the library capital reserve budget. Subsequent to that, the board discussed two items that are going to come up in the manager's report, and also discussed with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Project Conflict Attorney, three updates that will be discussed tonight, immediately after the consent agenda, or before the consent agenda, I'm sorry. Next up on tonight's agenda would be public comment. The public was invited to send any comments in via email to publiccomment@lowersouthamptontownship.org. And Mr. Gatto, was there any public comment that was sent in tonight to be read into the record?
Board Chair, there are none for tonight.
Thank you. Hearing there are no comments from the public. Mr. Dylan, do we want to move into the BCIU thing first before we do the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you because the BCIU conflict attorney is on a time constraints.
Pat's gonna, gonna handle it. I'm conflicted, so go ahead, Pat. Fill in the motion you're looking for.
Sure, thank you. As the board's aware, since your last meeting, the Bucks County IU has requested somewhat of a waiver or deferment with respect to the financial securities associated with the land development plan. In short, they're asking for the ability to start the work once the plan is signed and recorded, as well as the development agreement and the stormwater agreement are signed and recorded, but before we actually have the letter of credit in hand. And they want to be able to start that, because I guess there was some time that it's gonna take them a few weeks to get that letter of credit. So what I would say is if the, if the board is willing to entertain a motion to that effect, it would be to grant the, the, we'll call it a deferment of the financial securities for a period of three weeks, and allowing the BCIU to start the project once the, once the plan is signed and recorded, the development agreement and stormwater management agreement are signed and recorded, and subject to the permits issued, making it clear that the permit is good for three weeks until the letter of credit is received. And if the letter of credit is not received within that three-week period, that all week, that all work shall cease and stop until the letter of credit is provided.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. So this motion then was, is a follow-up to the stipulation that the board made at last week's meeting regarding the Bucks County Intermediate Units Agreement with the Court of Common. Please, is there anyone that would like to make a motion as just suggested by Mr. Armstrong?
I'd just like to make one comment, and that is that there's so many people re-mortgaging houses and stuff like that, that it may take a little bit longer than three weeks. But if you want to hold it to that, I think that's a good idea, and I'll make that motion, Ray.
Thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Shannon. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Susan Cummings.
Seconded by Ms. Cummings, and as we've been doing in the teleconference meetings, we'll do a roll call vote alphabetically. So Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes, so that motion to, as suggested by Mr. Armstrong, has been approved with a vote of 5-0. Thank you, Pat.
All right, thank you. And I do have another meeting, so I'm gonna have to jump off, but it was nice talking to you guys again. Take care.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is item one, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of item one A, approve, approval of the minutes for November 4, 2020. Item one B, approval of budget minutes, November 4, 2020. Item one C, approval of accounts payable, November 12, 2020. And I should note that I would believe that would include all of the accounts payable, except for item number three, vendor 1404 on page one of the expenditures in this week's regular payables. And that would be an expenditure to Begley, Carlin, and Mandio in the amount of $66. And the subtotal on that is Ottinger versus Lower Southampton Township. So as we've done in past meetings, that would be severed for a separate vote. But all of the other, other items in the regular payables. So is the, and item one D, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, November 12, 2020. So we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item three from the regular payables. So, as so read, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion, Ray.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Kutsaratus, second?
Go ahead, Ed.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. We'll go down to the roll call. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes, so the motion to approve the consent agenda minus that one item is approved with a vote of 5-0. Next, we would hold a separate vote on item three of the regular payables for November 12, 2020. And again, that was a payment of $66 to Begley, Carlin, and Mandio for Ottinger versus Lower Southampton Township. Is there a motion to approve that $66 payment?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Ms. Kaplan. Is there a second?
I'll second. It's only $66, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll take it.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Shannon. We'll go down a line again. Ms. Cummings?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes, so that motion passes with a vote of 3, 4, and 2 against. Item two on tonight's agenda is to consider the authorization of preparation of specs and bid by the Traffic Engineer for the Automatic Red Light Enforcement Program Grant Project at Busselton Pike between Bridle Path and Woodland in front of Colonial Nissan. And this is a follow-up of the suggestions that were brought forth at the last meeting. I'll turn this over to Mr. Dylan, the Township Manager, and Ron Schwartz is also here from Colonial Nissan to advise us of what the plans are for tonight. Mr. Dylan?
Well, this project's been being considered for a number of years, and it's, it's been suggested that we need, without bid, without specs, we're unable to get bids, and without bids, we're unable to assess the viability of the project. It was suggested by Joe Fiacco that he can prepare bids and specs for bid purposes for a cost not to exceed $20,000. The township is having a budget crisis due to the COVID. It was suggested that I reach out to Mr. Schwartz about sharing in the cost to have the, the specs prepared. I've done that. He responded immediately and indicated that he would be willing to share in the cost not to exceed $10,000 on his behalf, $20,000 in total. And so we're looking for Mr. Schwartz to confirm that, and then we look for a motion to authorize Mr. Fiacco to prepare the bid specs at a cost not to exceed $20,000.
Yes, Ron Schwartz, I've, I've been listening, and I guess I am approving that for the township.
Thank you, Ron. Any other comment or anything before we entertain a motion from the board or Mr. Gatto or anyone?
We will get, we will get specifications, et cetera, on the, on the plans. I'm still, I still have some concerns about it. But is there some way we could, I don't know, assure us of this is going to work? I've seen, I've seen in other areas and other countries, and some work and some don't. So I'm a little concerned about it. I would say let's give it a try, get some plans together, right?
So will you make your motion?
I can make that motion, yes. Thank you.
So, Mr. Shannon, just so we, we understand it's in the record then, your motion would be to approve appointing safe highway engineering to prepare the specs and bid for the oil grant project on Busselton Pike at a cost not to exceed $20,000, with that cost being split 50/50 between Lower Southampton Township and Mr. Schwartz of Colonial Nissan?
Yes.
Can, can I suggest in addition to that is that once you receive, once we receive bids and specs, we put them out, the bids, so... Does that make sense?
Yes.
Sure, that's why we're getting it done.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Shannon, that motion's okay with you then? That's, that would be the gist of your motion?
Yes.
Okay, would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Sha, Ms. Kaplan. We'll go down a line. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Ray Weldy, I vote yes, so the motion to appoint safe highway engineering to prepare the specs and bid and split the cost with Mr. Schwartz for a cost not to exceed $20,000 have been passed 5-0. Thank you to the board and also to Mr. Schwartz for joining together to at least get this part, to get this far and get this part done. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Next up on tonight's agenda, item three is to adopt a, adopt a preliminary annual operating budget for the year 2021. Mr. Gatto?
What you have before you is what was presented in the budget workshop. There are challenges towards for next year with the COVID-related. More importantly, with regard to revenues. So there will be a shrinkage on the revenue side. We will do our best to contain the expenditures as best as we can. It may require some restructuring of departments, but we're gonna have to do the best to get through 2021. I believe we can and we will, just that it's, it's gonna be a slow-moving process with a lot of variables. So I would request that you would improve the budget at tonight's meeting, the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gatto. Any comments from the board before we vote on that?
Just, thank you. Doing a great job.
Thank you.
And the budgeting.
Well, it's an awful lot of work, John. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So we would need a motion then to adopt the preliminary annual operating budget as proposed by Manager Joe Gatto for the year 2021. Is there a motion to approve that budget?
Ray?
Yes.
I'm sitting here listening to it. I don't know what the amount is, or I don't know how you something to know what we're approving.
Sounds good.
So your revenue, your revenue projections for the given year?
Revenue projections are 10 million?
Projected with an expenditure of 11.99.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
With those expenditures and revenues as just stated by Mr. Gatto, is there a motion then to approve that operating budget?
As, as treasurer of the organization, I hope I, I didn't have a whole lot to do with the numbers that are on the piece of paper. But as that job that I'm supposed to be doing, I'd like to make that motion first.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Shannon, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Kutsaratus. We'll get it, thank you. We'll go down a line. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes, so the operating budget for 2021 is approved with a vote of 5-0. Next up on the agenda, item four, adopt the preliminary capital reserve fund budget for the year 2021. Mr. Gatto, again?
Sure. Right now, as we're projecting for 2020, we're projecting the carryover of $1.1 million. With that being said, that 20, that going into the 2021 budget, if we were to have no RDA grant funding in the given year, our potential expenditure base would be $1.264 million. So leaving us with excess expenditure of $1.26 million. I doubt that will be the case, and we are projecting that we will be receiving RDA funds. The question is the amounts, and I would expect it to be anywhere from $200,000 to $450,000 for this 2021 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Gatto. So we need a motion then to adopt the preliminary capital reserve budget for the year 2021 with the expenditures and as just stated by Mr. Gatto?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Ms. Cummings, a second?
Second.
Mr. Shannon, seconded. We'll go down a line. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I'll vote yes on that also, that, that preliminary capital reserve fund budget passes with a vote of 5 to 0. Next up on the agenda, item five, adopt preliminary sewer, sewer capital reserve fund budget for the year 20... Mr. Gatto?
As far as the sewer fund, we're projecting to end the 2020 year, $1.307 million that will be carried over into the 2021 budget. We have a couple particular pumping station projects that are, that would be initiated in this year as well as in next year. We would have the expenditures of approximately about 140, or I'm sorry, 254,000 with a potential remaining balance, fund balance of $1.158 million.
Thank you. So we would need a motion then to adopt the sewer capital reserve budget for 2021 with the reserves and the excess revenues expenditures for next year as just stated by Mr. Gatto?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Kaplan, seconded. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Ray Weldy, I'll vote yes, so the sewer capital reserve budget for 2021 passes with a vote of 5 to 0. Next on the agenda, item six, adopt the preliminary library capital reserve fund budget for the year 2021. Mr. Gatto?
Sure. As far as 2020, we're projecting to have a remaining reserve around $57,000. And we would carry that over and into the 2021 budget cycle with an allocation of $10,000 being transferred over to the library for capital issues, as well as appropriations in the amount of $20,000, just in case if something emergent were to occur, thus leaving them a potential remaining balance of $47,512.
Thank you, Mr. Gatto. So would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the library capital reserve budget, fund budget for 2021 with the figures that Mr. Gatto just stated?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Ms. Cummings made the motion to second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I'll vote yes, the library capital reserve budget then motion passes with a vote of 5-0. Last on the agenda, item number seven, that would be to adopt the preliminary operating reserve fund budget for the year 2021. Once again, Mr. Gatto?
Sure. As far as the operating reserve for 2020, we're projecting... Sure. As far as the operating reserve for 2020, we're projecting 1.7, uh, 1, 1,771,397 dollars. And that would be carried over into the 2021 budget. We do have, uh, an item of, of a transfer to our general fund, which is the, the main operating fund of a billion dollars if needed. Uh, we typically do not have that, uh, in any given year. We typically have a placeholder of 275,000. With regard to this particular year and being in, uh, you know, a COVID year, um, where revenue is going to be short or potentially short, uh, there will be a transfer to the general fund of a million dollars if needed. If that were to occur, you would have a remaining reserve of 778,897 dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Gatto. Um, we would need a motion then to adopt the preliminary operating reserve fund budget for the year 2021 with the figures as just stated by Mr. Gatto. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So make that motion. All right, go ahead. Sorry.
So move right.
Uh, Mr. Kutsaratus made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I'll vote yes. That motion to adopt the preliminary operating reserve fund budget for 2021 passes with a vote of five to zero. That takes us through the agenda and to the managers' reports. So I will turn it over to Mr. Gatto for the managers' report. Joe?
Thank you, Board Chair. Um, one of two issues and basically, you know, we're looking for consideration of approval for tri-state engineering to, to revise different township maps. Uh, the street map, zoning map, sanitary sewer map and storm sewer map all need updating. Been a multitude of years and so we, we have projected costs of $7,824 to be approved for tonight.
And Joe, you said those maps, at least you said in the workshop, those maps haven't been updated since 2012 or 2013 and there's a need to have them updated?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions from the board about the maps before we make a motion?
This is sufficient money for, to get the kind of maps that we expect? Yes?
This, they, they are getting out and according to them, this is their estimated costing.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make, I'll make, if it's. That's all right. So Joe, sorry.
That's all right, sir. I mean, you have professional engineer reviewing it and you have a computer tech. They're the two cost components that they have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, if there aren't any other questions then, would anyone like to make a motion to, um, approve tri-state engineers um, to prepare the four maps as, um, presented by Mr. Gatto for a cost, approximate cost of $7,824?
I'll make that motion. Good, Kaplan.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan's made the motion. Would anyone like to second it?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Cummings. Uh, Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I'll vote yes. So that motion to, uh, have tri-state engineers prepare those four maps at a cost of $7,824 passes with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Joe?
Sure. The second item tonight is, uh, looking for approval to have the public works director, uh, to sign off on a document dealing with that lower Morland Township. Lower Morland Township's requesting permission to install sanitary flow meter in one of our manholes. The flow meter would record sewage flows between the transfer properties of Lower South and Lower and Lower Morland. Uh, this was reviewed again by Joe Wong and TKS engineers. He had no issue with it whatsoever. Uh, the course is the responsibility of Lower Morland Township. Notice whether they would be touching our manhole and would be given to Lower Southampton Township 24 hours advanced notice. And they would be sharing whatever flow information would be, would be automatic. Um, myself, I personally cannot sign off due to the fact that I am a member of the board, um, over there. Um, so that's why Mark is being proposed to sign off on the approval.
Joe, when you presented this at the, at the work session, I was just, there's no meter there now? So this will be a new meter?
This will be very low meter right now. So this is basically a new meter going in there and it's a cost, it, it all came rise due to the toner Huntington development. So this was the impetus to make sure, uh, that we have it vetted and basically we know the amount of flows that are coming across. So I think it's a win-win on both, on both sides.
Okay.
Now, we had, we had some problems with this in, in the past, right, Joe?
Sure.
And now, and now this is going to be a new one or a, a replacement or is it a brand new one?
This is a brand new, this is a brand new one coming across from our side over to their side. So that's why they want to man, go into one of our manholes and install this.
And then we pay based on that, that chart, right?
Based, well, uh, uh, yeah, we're going to be paying them on based on that chart, but the cost of the actual installation and meter is all lower morally, not on us.
Okay. Thank you.
And we, we need a motion to approve this sign off by, uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If, unless the board has any further questions, would anyone like to make a motion authorizing Mr. McDonald to sign off on an agreement with Lower Morland to install the sewer flow meter for the transfer of sewagees just presented by Mr. Gatto?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Cummings. A second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Uh, Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I'll vote yes. So the motion to approve, uh, just to allow Mr. McDonald to sign off on that agreements approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Joe, anything else?
Yeah, no, I, I just want to kind of go over back into the budget a little bit. Um, I mean, I just want to say again, and I, I went through this, um, with the board during the workshop. I just want to say, you know, thank you for having the pleasure of doing these budgets for the past nine cycles. I've worked in them and out around them. This has been one of the more challenging ones to prepare. Uh, with that sting, you know, we've, our fiscal prudent over the years have served, has, has served us well. When I first got here, we had about 4.4 million in fund balance. Right now, we're at around 4.2 million. That 4.2 million is going to help assist us during this COVID, during this COVID crisis. So with that being said, you know, fiscal prudent is, is going to win out for us and is better prepared us for these type of COVID type emergency relations or, or emergent, emergent activities. So what we need to make sure is, as a township, is each respective department needs to be aware of their cost structure. Um, they maybe have to change their maybe conduct business or do business. Um, so, um, it, it's going to be a try, a little bit of a trying time. You might come up with some complaint. But for the better of the township, you know, we have to proceed in this direction and do it in a fiscal prudent manner. So I, I appreciate your support and appreciate, appreciate the fact that you passed the O1 dual fund operating budget tonight.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks. I have to say in my limited time here, um, you know, this year with the tremendous losses that have been suffered financially by our township residents and subsequently the township itself. You know, Joe, your expertise in, in, in pulling these budgets together and preparing us for a rainy day, and this is the rainiest of days that we're in right now, has enabled us to, um, be able to move forward and provide the services that we continue to provide. So thank you very much.
No problem, sir. We do, we do have one other issue, which is that PICO grant that we had from the prior, uh, the prior board meeting. Um, with regard to, um, the resolution, the resolution had the appearance that it was $6,000 was the township commitment. The township's commitment is $3,000 and the other component is $3,000 from PICO. So Matt wanted me to make sure, uh, that part was clarified. Um, and Frank would talk about, uh, Frank, as far as perfecting it, do we need to do anything on that?
Yeah, my suggestion is we make a motion to have, to correct the mistake in the resolution and then have the, the, the correct numbers, uh, inserted into the resolution which was passed by the board.
And the resolution number would stay the same?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
So someone can make that motion.
So we would make a motion then to amend, revise the original resolution?
Correct, revise the resolution to reflect the actual numbers, uh, which were mistakenly, correct the numbers which were put, originally put in the resolution.
Okay. And that was resolution 2020 dash, does anyone, do you know Joe or not?
Um, I'm requiring right now for the exact reservation number. 35. Thank you, Peter.
25?
35.
35.
35?
Yes.
Okay. So we would need a motion to amend, um, resolution 2020 dash 35, which was passed at last week's meeting.
Excuse me, Pat? I'm sorry. This is Christina. It's actually 2020 dash 34.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Chris.
Well, at least we won't have to make a revision to our revision. So we can say that we would need a motion then to make a revision to resolution 2020 dash 34, which was approved at last week's meeting and that, uh, revised motion would read that the township would approve applying for a grant through Pico's tree replacement program for $3,000 with the township matching $3,000 for a total of $6,000 if that grant is approved, correct?
Correct. We just saved $3,000 too. That's great.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Shannon. A second?
I'll second it. Deb Kaplan.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Uh, yes, because we're saving $3,000. That's great.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I'll vote yes. So the motion to revise the previous motion is approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have for tonight, Board Chair.
Great. Thank you. We'll, we'll go down to supervisors' comments. Uh, uh, Ms. Cummings?
Again, I just wanted to, uh, mention what other, and thank Joe for all the hard work that he's done putting the, uh, the budgets together during these, uh, challenging times. I know it was an easy Joe and, you know, there's almost only so much to go around. So you did a great job and I have to commend you for that. Um, just a reminder to anybody that's watching, um, I know everybody has, um, heard about the increasing numbers, uh, for COVID um, in the community as well as, um, through the state, you know, just reminding everybody, you know, please practice their social distancing, wearing the masks. Um, you know, everybody staying safe and, uh, I want to, um, let every, I want to, um, let everybody know to have a happy Thanksgiving and a very safe Thanksgiving. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Uh, next up, um, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yeah. First off, I just want to thank Joe and, and all the, uh, department heads for all their hard work during this budget cycle. Job well done to you all. I do have to apologize. I'm a little hoarse tonight. So I hope, uh, hope you guys can hear me. I also received a email this afternoon asking for me to read it. Um, it is titled, "Three Township Supervisors Not Being Truthful to Residents of the Township." My name is Frank Walter Jr. I'm a 52-year-old veteran firefighter and past chief of the Feasterville Fire Company. Regarding the request with the RDA for a glorified brush slash field truck, which is a joke. Supervisor Ray Weldy read a letter that I wrote back in 2013 for a true fire attack truck. Way back then, the manpower in the township fire marshal's office was sufficient and daytime manpower in the fire company was better than today. Seven years later, the fire company's problem today is a shortage of manpower during the daytime weekdays, not a fire truck. Use our fire engines to respond to fire calls. Before the township meeting to discuss the RDA projects for the township, I personally called by phone the three township supervisors, Ray Weldy, Deb Kaplan and Shannon. I advised them that I was totally against this brush truck. It is not needed. Use our fire engines instead. And that we need manpower during the daytime. Uh, these three supervisors were not truthful to the residents of Lower Southampton Township and it bothers me. I would like to thank, uh, Supervisor Kutsaratus and Sue Cummings for listening to the expert testimony from the two high, highly qualified fire chiefs and voting against this request. Um, I just want to add one more thing too, not to rehash this issue, but shortly after this, uh, our Bucks County Fire Marshal, Mark Kramer, also reached out to me personally. And he explained to me in his expert opinion that this pumper truck was not what the township needed. It was a bad recommendation for more acting fire marshal and it was a huge injustice to the residents of Lower Southampton Township. Uh, I'm just, just reading what was sent to me, folks. That's, that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Shannon?
Yes. Um, yeah, I just want to say thanks to Joe also and Peter and those guys that are, uh, coming up with these numbers and they're fantastic and they're great people to work on the numbers. Boy, I'll tell you what, they're, they're really good. And, uh, we'd like to do some little more on, on budgets on a monthly basis, but we can talk about that later. Uh, nothing negative in, in the budgets that, uh, these guys have put together. Um, the parade was mentioned in one of them and we need to work, start working on the parade. Um, probably around the first of January is, is typically what we try to do. Uh, so hopefully we can make sure that it happens. Uh, we have the money to run the parade. That's not, that's not a problem. Uh, but we just got to, hopefully the weather holds out and, uh, COVID, uh, doesn't do any bad, more bad stuff to us. Uh, the other thing I'd like to talk about is, is, uh, well, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Um, that's a real nice time of the year. And I'd also like to talk to, uh, uh, Mike about the town center and see what plans we might be able to make, uh, since I opened my big mouth the other day and said, I think we ought to do something if we have a plan. And so I'd like to get together with, uh, with Mike and talk about the things that we already planned in the past and see how that can work and develop something, uh, different, bigger, better, whatever. And, uh, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
The supervisor just received a letter, um, it was about 10:05 tonight from a resident who praised our library and the library staff and volunteers, specifically, um, this resident mentioned a, um, staff member by name, Gerald D. Cast, Castorlin. I apologize if I miss, uh, misspoke her name.
It's Jory Castorline.
Castorline. Thank you. And, um, he, she, this resident also mentioned the gentleman that worked at the, uh, library as well and what excellent work they do. And I, I don't know, I don't want to mention the resident's name. I don't know if this resident would want me to, so I won't mention the resident's name. And she gave a very, it is a she. She gave a very generous donation. So thank you so much for writing that letter to us. I really appreciate that. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And as far as some comments that were made that Tim read from, um, the letter he just read, I was truthful with the residents. I voted how I voted, was taking everything into consideration and I listened to everyone intently. And everyone's opinion did matter to me. And that's what I want to say about that. Just because we disagree doesn't mean we were being dishonest. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, a couple of things. Uh, the Veterans Advisory Council is looking for members. Um, a member just recently resigned and will be stepping down at the end of the year. Um, an appointed member. So if anyone is interested in submitting a, a letter of interest, uh, that could be submitted to Christina at the township building and we're looking to fill that vacancy and also for any veterans that are interested in joining the meetings to, uh, contact the VAC and come out of the VAC looks to, to reach out and to serve all of the veterans, um, in Lower Southampton Township and in the area. and come out. The VAC looks to, to reach out and to serve all of the veterans in Lower Southampton Township and in the area. So we're looking for members, whether they be young or old, to come out and join the VAC. Next is, I'd like to thank a local Realtor. Tracy Seiler Morgan lives in Lower Southampton Township, and she's a Realtor for Keller Williams Realty in Langhorne. And Ms. Seiler Morgan contacted me and asked if she could, if her organization could participate in providing some Thanksgiving dinners for some residents of the township. I was able to get Ms. Seiler Morgan in touch with the principals and the teacher at Pequesting Middle School and Fertibar Elementary School. And they were able to coordinate donating 35 turkeys on top of the fixings that were collected this past Saturday at the Fill the Cop Car event that was held at the Feasterville Giant. So in partnership with the Lower Southampton Police Department, the two principals at the schools, a teacher named Mr. Bill Barnes and Keller Williams Real Estate, the school, through the school nurses and counselors have identified 35 needy families that'll receive a full Thanksgiving dinner the week leading up to Thanksgiving. So it's a, it's a great gesture, and I'd like to thank Tracy Morgan, Seiler Morgan, for putting that together. I also like everyone to wish them a great Thanksgiving. Enjoy your time with friends and family. And to finish up, I do have to echo Ms. Kaplan's sentiments. I mean, Mr. Walter, Chief Frank Walter, I've known Frank for many years. He did call me on a Saturday and relay his opinion of the pumper. I wasn't aware of any letter that existed until after he called me, or I would have questioned him about that letter. Anyone that had anything to do with this decision took everyone's opinion very seriously. We tried to do what's best for the township, and that's to provide a service to the residents where the firefighters can get out to the fires as quick as they can at day and night. I mean, I think any firefighter would agree that they sign up to be a fireman to get out and put out the fire as quickly as they can. Whether there's some disagreements over the, the equipment, the need for the equipment. We rely on the experts for that, and we made the best decision that we thought was appropriate under the circumstances, and I stand by my decision. I'm, I'm sorry that Mr. Walters disagrees with that, but again, I stand by, by my decision. If there are no further comments from the board, we would need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Kutsaratus. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. Motion to adjourn is approved. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and everyone have a great Thanksgiving.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thanksgiving.